Welcome, everyone, to the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. And I would like to ask three representatives of each team to come up and lead us in the pledge, please. And you have to just come up, just come right up to the dais. Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm Barb Lewis, president of the board this year, and to my left is Commissioner Jeff Benton, our vice president, and fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, our administrator Tracy Davies, our deputy administrator Dawn Houston, and we do have our general counsel and deputy administrator Eric Hostetler with us, and our clerks Jennifer and Brandy. We can begin.
Resolution number two-five dash two-six-six in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings for a regular meeting held April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash two-six-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number two-five dash two-six-seven in the matter of approving purchase orders, signing now certificates, and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero-four-one-six, and memo transfers in batch number MT APR zero-four-one-six.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash two-six-seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash two-six-eight in the matter of granting annexation petition from agents for the petitioner Stephen D. Martin and Elizabeth Michael Esquire requesting annexation of two-point-nine-two-zero acres of land in Delaware Township to the city of Delaware.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash two-six-eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash two-six-nine in the matter of honoring the Olentangie Berlin High School Cheer Team.
Superintendent Meyer, could you?
We need to do the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just jumped in. We have to pass.
I still need a motion.
Yes, okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion.
Now.
Now, sorry. Thank you.
Good morning. It's nice to be back again, and want to thank you for inviting us here to recognize wonderful student athletes that we have in two of our high schools. So first, the Berlin High School Cheer Squad. So I want to invite Coach Lehman and Principal Jagger up to the mic, who I think they're going to bring some representatives up as well. But in Olentangie, we talk a lot about the student experience, and part of the student experience in Olentangie has to do with interscholastic athletics. And the opportunities that we're able to provide for our kids in sports all across our three high, our four high schools is tremendous for our student athletes. So we're certainly proud of their many, many accomplishments across the district, but here we're, today, we're here to recognize Berlin High School first, and their first-ever, right, state championship and cheerleading. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jagger and Coach Lehman here to talk a little bit about the program and their accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having us. I really appreciate it, and all the recognition of our team and also the two other teams here. It's been an amazing season, a lot of hard work from the start of, we start in July, which is crazy. But again, I just want to celebrate my twenty-five athletes. Not all of them are here, some of them are doing state testing, but we got nine of them here, and just the victory, which is a reflection of their hard work and their unstoppable team spirit. Every practice and performance has led us to this moment. Winning state isn't about the trophy, it's about just the heart and the hard work that we put into it. So again, thank you so much for having us, and congratulations to Olentangie Berlin Cheerleading and the rest of the two teams here as well from Orange.
Oh, thank you. Could you give us your names so we know? We've got people listening.
Just the nine that are here.
Okay, yes.
So we have my two seniors, we have Drew Warner, Sophie Peterson, then we have Audrey Bruner, Grace Bohati, Zoe Kellner, Cameron Ferenz, Mackenzie Wright, Josie Cash, and Olivia Cook here with me.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say thanks for having us and recognizing our student athletes. Every day when I'm leaving work, they're usually in our commons, rolling out mats, getting, putting in extra hours. So it's really cool to see them. If you visit our gym at thirty-one forty, you can see that we have several dark blue border banners that are up, and that signifies state final four, state runner-up, and this is the first time in school history that we got to put up a light blue bordered banner for our state champions here.
It's been a short history in Berlin.
Very short history, but still, the first one is really cool to accomplish. So proud of these ladies and coaches for all the effort they put into it, and even placed really well at nationals then as well. So congratulations to them.
What did you have to go through as far as the different levels then to be the champs?
For, so at a state level, there's two rounds, there's a qualifier round, and that has the most teams in it, and they divide up between D-one, D-two, D-three, D-four. The weird thing is, we compete against, we are a building team, meaning that we put girls in there, and we compete against teams that don't put girls in the air. Years past, it's always been a team that doesn't put girls in the air that has been winning, but we're the first time that, we've been state runners-up the past three years, and finally got to win.
Made it to the top.
Yeah, so after that first round, we were sitting in first, then after the finals round, we were still in first by three points, I believe.
Oh, my gosh.
So, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Oh, boy. A lot of work, an awful lot of work.
Yes.
Oh, gee. I think what I'll do is read the proclamation first, and then we can pass the resolution. I chose this proclamation because my granddaughter is a cheerleader at Wake Forest, and she's a flyer, and, which is like, ah. So, but, I mean, I know all the hard work, of course, she did this in high school, too, and so I know all the hard work throughout the years, and it's the leadership, and, I mean, it's tough, and, boy, you have to be in perfect shape, too. But I will, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Delaware County Commissioners have the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance and the exemplary achievements of residents, and whereas the Olentangie Berlin High School Cheer Team has brought honor and distinction to the community with their exceptional performance at the two thousand and twenty-four Ohio High School Athletic Association Spirit State Championship, where the Bears claim the title-one title, sorry, Division-one title, and whereas in qualifying for the state championship, the squad swept every scoring area, earning the best in category awards in the band chant, crowd-leading, and fights on categories, and whereas the competitive cheer team first formed three years ago, has quickly achieved exemplary results, already achieving a sixth-place finish during a national competition, and twice finishing as state runner-ups, and whereas this year, led by a group of six seniors, the squad demonstrated effective leadership in rallying support among fans and promoting team spirit for the Berlin Bears. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the hard work, dedication, and team spirit exhibited in Olentangie Berlin Cheer Team on the occasion of their first state title. Signed, Commissioners Jeff Benton, Barb Lewis, and Gary Merrill.
Do the two ladies like to say anything as I came up?
Sure, anybody?
You want to say anything?
Yeah. Okay, okay. Sure, if anybody else on the cheer team? No.
I think she wants to.
Oh, okay.
I agree, I tell. If you could just give us your name.
My name is Grace Bohati. I'm a junior at Olentangie Berlin. I've been able to cheer on this cheer team for now three years, so two runner-ups and a state championship. Most of us have been cheering for a majority of our life, so it's really exciting just to finally be recognized, and this year with all the accomplishments we have. And I just want to say a big thank you to Justin for leading us there, and having the support, and really pushing us to do our best at every practice, and Jagger, again, for supporting us. We've had great school spirit and principals that really just help along the way. So, thank you to everyone here.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, now we'll vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash two-six-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
And would you like to get a picture?
Yes, we're going to get a picture.
Can we come up for a picture?
And, right there.
Everybody in. One more hole away. Oh, everyone's in Plaza. All right, here we go. Thank you, guys.
And next, Superintendent Meyer, did you want to introduce anybody before? We're going to do the Olentangie Orange High School Boys Basketball Team.
Okay, so I'm going to blame Coach.
Coach Kallo up.
Oh, I guess, Herramos. I am so excited to get you up.
Resolution number two-five dash two-seven-zero in the matter of honoring the Olentangie Orange High School Boys Basketball Team.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote. Oh, no, we'll wait, okay. We'll wait on that, okay.
The good thing is, we get to do this again, so third time will be a term, right?
I know.
At this time, I'll bring Coach Kallo and Ms. Asher, principal at Orange High School, and a couple of representatives from the Boys Basketball Team. And again, just want to thank you for having us here and recognizing the great honors from our student athletes here. But, you know, one thing I'll say about the Boys Basketball Team, when they epitomize a real team, so in watching them play, players who are unselfish, player who know their roles on the team, the culture within the program's extremely strong, and to make a run in boys' basketball across the state in Division-one is no easy feat. So obviously, we're extremely proud of their accomplishments, but really proud of their growth as young men under the leadership of Coach Kallo. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Coach Kallo, if you want to say a few words just about the run.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you for having us, first of all. Honored to be here. I don't know if I've ever been in this building, beautiful building.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so our team, obviously, a lot goes into winning a state title. You got to do a lot of things very well, but I think our winning formula, it's many different things, but I think if I catch, capturing the essence of it, I think it came down to joy, hard work, preparation, and those would be the main things for us, and selflessness, I can't forget that one, that's critical to our team's success. Our kids showed up every single day, you know, our, my classroom is our film room, close to the gym, and they just came in with a smile into film room every day. They really loved being around each other, you know, and it kind of breaks some stereotypes because like our kids were super happy every single day, but also extremely hardworking, extremely competitive. So just a great blend of enjoying each other, enjoying the process of getting better, but also competing really hard, being very prepared. And again, the selflessness, like President Truman doesn't, you know, you can accomplish great things when you don't care who gets the credit, that's our team. Like, we have a lot of kids that could have played varsity at other places and been starters at other places, and they just wanted to contribute to this team's success and accepted any role they had. A lot of kids that didn't get to play hardly at all, that could have started other places, and their attitude was incredible all season, just wanted to have fun with their friends and help this team to be the best they could. Win or lose, I maintain, obviously, we won, so it's easy to say now, but even if we lost that state championship game, this has been a blessing, this has been a joy. It's been an incredible ride, and very, very fun because of the attitude of these young men. So, pleasure to work with them, and very blessed to have the opportunity to do this together.
Oh, that's great. Would anyone like to speak? Could you just give us your name?
Yeah, my name's Trayton Schrader. I want to thank you guys for having us here. It was a great year for us. I think what let us go so deep in the tournament is just our connection with each other. Outside of practice, we were always hanging out with each other, we were always doing everything together, whether that was like taking care of our bodies or just having fun outside of practice, and I think that's what helped our connection on the court and our chemistry on the court, so, thank you.
That's, that's great. What was that last game like?
That last game, that was, I don't know, a lot to comprehend, but it was fun, so.
Eddie, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Here we go.
There we are.
I'm Keegan Up, I'm a senior. I think it was a special season, you know, like kind of what Trayton said, we're all connected. I've been playing with most of these guys since the third grade, all the seniors, so it was like really special to finally win like a big accomplishment, and, I don't know, we just all love each other, and it really helped us win finals, and just, we're all connected, so, I just love the ball.
Boy, want to say anything about the last game, then?
What was the score?
Yeah, what was the score?
I think it was fifty-six to forty-one.
Oh, wow. Oh, gee. Not even close.
Impressive.
Who did, who did you play?
Reynoldsburg.
Reynoldsburg, okay, okay.
It was the first time two Columbus, uh, first time since the thirties, I think, two Columbus teams were in the state championship against each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's pretty cool.
That sure is. Oh, my gosh. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Benton then is going to read the proclamation.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm honored to read the proclamation, but before I did that, I wanted to start with just a couple remarks. A year ago at this time, we had another team from Delaware County in this very room honoring them, and that was the Delaware Hays Boys Basketball Team, and that, that is my alma mater, so I felt a special affinity for that. And at the time, it was an incredible accomplishment because they made it to the state tournament. They didn't, they didn't win, they lost in the semis, but almost won the semis, and then the team that beat them went on to win the state last year. They got to this, to the state tournament by beating Olentangie Orange in last year's regional final. But, you know, it's just an incredible accomplishment, actually, finish it, you know, win the state title. There's a thousand teams, over a thousand teams, high school boys' basketball teams in this state, and you guys are the best. I mean, that's an incredible, incredible accomplishment. It just, it just a real tribute to the team, the leadership, the support from the families and everything, and, you know, I'm just really honored that we get to participate and recognize everyone today for that accomplishment. So I'll read the proclamation, then we'll vote on it. Whereas the Delaware County Commissioners have the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance and the exemplary achievements of residents, and whereas the Olentangie Orange High School Boys Basketball Team brought honor and distinction to the community with their exceptional performance and sportsmanship throughout the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five season, and during the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Championship Tournament, and whereas, after ending the past two seasons one step short of the Division-one state tournament, the pioneers overcame Groveport in this year's regional final, giving the program its first state tournament berth, and whereas, the team advanced past the final four and secured an appearance at the state final after edging past Saint Ignatius in a narrow overtime victory closely resembling their regular season matchup against the Cleveland team, and whereas, at the state final, bolstered by an exciting third-quarter performance, the team claimed the program's first-ever title when they defeated Reynoldsburg in front of seven thousand five hundred and forty-five fans at the University of Dayton Arena. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the Olentangie Orange Boys Basketball Team for their extraordinary season and for exemplifying the best of our community spirit and values at the state tournament. So congratulations. Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-five dash two-seven-zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Oh, thank you so much. We'll get a picture.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thank you.
We got, oh, there's Coach Kallo. I was like, is that Coach in here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel short.
There's a lot of tall trees in that.
Yes. Okay.
Resolution number two-five dash two-seven-one in the matter of honoring the Olentangie Orange High School Girls Wrestling Team.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And we will actually vote on that resolution later, and I'll, again, Superintendent Meyer, please.
Thank you. So it's my honor to introduce Coach Kallo, Ms. Asher, principal again, or, yeah, Nicola, sorry, we have so many, sorry. Coach Nicola, and I, come on up, Coach Nicola, and a couple of his reps, and then Ms. Asher again. And I do want to say this, too, because Coach Nicola, so last year was selected as national wrestling coach of the year.
Oh, my. Oh, my gosh.
So we're extremely proud of the girls' wrestling program at Orange High School, and Orange pioneers, and it's really fitting because Orange High School girls have been pioneers for girls' wrestling in the state of Ohio, and now back-to-back state champions, and we were talking earlier in the hall, they, they just reload every year just because of the tradition that they've already built within the program. So we're expecting great things in the future, but this year, we're here to celebrate the, again, back-to-back state championship, but the state championship from this year, so Coach Kallo, you want to talk a little bit about this? I keep on calling Nicola, Nicola, Coach Nicola. You guys don't look alike.
Yeah.
And I hired, and I hired Coach Nicola way back when at Orange High School, so.
We've both gotten older, so, no.
I apologize, but.
I was hired in the office at Olentangie, the small office.
Yeah, so he's part of the inaugural staff at Olentangie Orange High School back in two thousand and eight, so.
Well, that's great. Coach, welcome.
Hi, guys. Hey, thanks for having us out today. Congrats to the Berlin Comp Cheer Team, and Coach Kallo, and his boys on state titles. It was a good year for the district. So these are my four captains up here, and we've got a team of great girls at the high school level, about thirty-six, and if we go all the way down to our youth girls, over a hundred in the program, so it's pretty exciting to be at a school that doesn't just kind of tolerate girls' sports, but constantly seeks to elevate it and put them in a position, not to be state champions, which is, of course, an amazing honor, and we're lucky to have the type of program that can compete for that, but to come in every day and put in the same type of work that the guys' side does, and that support goes all the way up to the top with Ms. Asher and beyond, and also within our boys' program, you know, we're really cohesive with how we interact with them in practice times and splitting the room, who goes early, who goes late, and every school doesn't have that, and we're really appreciative, and there's a lot of our program to thrive and grow, and the girls to become good at the sport. When I look at my program and our girls, it's really their program. They all come from different walks of life in sports, and we think about a sport like wrestling, it's so hard on the body physically, it's also hard on the mind, if you have to, you know, continue to come in and compete, you know, really what is a combat sport, and put some other things on hold, you know, and they've done an amazing job of doing that. And when I think of the rest of the program, you know, a lot of the girls that you see here today, these are twelve of our fourteen starters, we have other girls in the program that, like Coach Kallo said, could go to other programs and probably, you know, do very, very well, but they've elected to be part of our program and help these girls ready to go. Also had girls in our program that moved weight classes to get everybody in and put our best team out there, really selfless. When we break practice every day, they talk about the idea of family, and sometimes you bring that, that term out. We roll, people roll it out a lot, maybe a little bit overused, but I think, when I think of these girls, you know, again, similar to what Coach Kallo said, is they're very tight, they're, they're very tight socially, they're very tight, you know, obviously in the practice room, and a good team doesn't work without something like that. So I'm lucky to be able to be here with these ladies and represent them and our coaching staff, and, and really watch how they inspire and lead young girls. I got a text from an old wrestler's mom yesterday morning, and she was in our program for years, she's also a teacher in our district, and it was a girl, a water model in her second grade class, and she had a sticker on it that said, "I'm the future," and it's girls' wrestling. That's pretty cool, so I'm excited to just be, be along for the ride with these great athletes and great young women, so that's my, that's my pitch here, so.
Thank you, thank you so much. Congratulations, too, back-to-back.
Thank you.
Titles, oh, my gosh.
No pressure.
Gee, no pressure, yeah, right.
Thanks, Mr. Meyer.
Right. Would, would anyone else like to speak? I'm sure.
This is Jenny Orazarianos. Jenny is one of our captains.
Yeah, it's easy.
She's our only fourth, four-year letter winner in the program. She's state placed for this year, finally got on that podium, she's just an awesome kid and a great leader, and I think she's retired now. Are you retired?
I think so.
She thinks so. She's going to be on Ohio State in the fall.
Oh, congratulations. Welcome, Jenny.
Hi, I'm Jenny Orazarianos. I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity, and thank you for recognizing our hard work. I want to thank our coaches because they spend a lot of time making sure that we put the work in and making sure that we don't, if we have our goals, they want us to help, they want to help us reach them. I also, not just, especially Nicola, because he spends so much time and dedication making sure we have everything that we need for our program. I also want to thank our teammates, I know we're all not here, but we need everybody in our team to be able to function, like, we have, this title isn't just only the lineups, it's everybody's, everybody that comes in the room, and we have girls that didn't make it in the lineup, and they were still showing up every day. So everybody's dedication, everybody's hard work is, it's just one big thing, and, yeah, we're just family, so, thank you.
Oh, that's great. What did you have to go through, then, to win the title, some of the different steps?
We all had to get, we all had to place, I think. We needed, we won one-eleven to eighty-four against Marysville at the state tournament. I think we all just needed to get through it, so all of the girls that we, that made it through regionals, all of us placed at state, so.
Okay, wow. Oh, that's, gosh, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Lydia Heinrich. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Asher, our principal, for her continued support of girls' sports at Orange, but also girls' wrestling. We had a in-school duel, pep rally, but assembly last year, and it, it really meant a lot to me and the program, just to get that support from up top and to be able to show the school who we are and what girls' wrestling is all about. I also just want to thank Coach Nicola and the rest of our coaches because, you know, they've, they've, they say we're pioneers, but really without him, like in his push for establishing a girls' wrestling team. Everybody that comes in the room and we have girls that didn't make it in the lineup and they were still showing up every day. So everybody's dedication, everybody's hard work is just one big thing and yeah, we're just family, so thank you.
Oh, that's great. What did you have to go through then to win the title, some of the different steps?
We all had to get, we all had to place, I think. We needed, we won eleven to eighty-four against Marysville at the state tournament. I think we all just needed to get through it. So all of the girls that we, that made it through regionals, all of us placed at state, so.
Okay. Wow. Oh, that's, gosh, that's great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Lydia Heinrich. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Asher, our principal, for her continued support of girls' sports at Orange, but also girls wrestling. We had an in-school duel, pep rally, but assembly last year and it really meant a lot to me and the program just to get that support from up top and to be able to show the school who we are and what girls wrestling is all about. I also just want to thank Coach Nicola and the rest of our coaches because, you know, they've, they've, they say we're pioneers, but really without him, like in his push for establishing a girls' wrestling team, we wouldn't even be here today. So and then I just want to thank my team because we really are a family. Wrestling, it's different because, you know, winning that, this was the first year we won the state duel title, but also the state championship. So it's different because it's individual, but also together. So to clinch that state duel title, we did it as a team, but we also went out there and we had to lean on each other and same thing for this state title. We, it was, we were fighting for the girl next to us, we were fighting for each other. So it's really a different dynamic. It's something special, it's not something everyone gets and I think that really makes us who we are and makes us as close as we are, so.
Oh, that's, gosh. Unbelievable, the leadership that everyone here has exhibited, the hard work, I mean, can't believe it. Anybody else?
Oh, yes. A few words. I figured I would go at the end after both programs went. First, congratulations to Berlin, that is an incredible honor and you represent our district well, so thank you. As you can probably tell, I'm beaming with pride. I'm so proud of our incredible kids. They aren't just talented students and athletes, but they are wonderful teammates and they are, most importantly, wonderful humans. Both programs are talented and certainly contributed to their success, but I think more importantly, they understand if you want to go fast, you go alone, but if you want to go far, you go together. And that sense of community and team comes from the top and two incredible coaches and teachers in Coach Nicola and Coach Kelo. So just so incredibly proud of our kids, of our coaches, of our staff and thank you so much for having us here today and allowing us to celebrate with you. It's really been a tremendous honor, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. It's our honor to have you here. And Commissioner Merrill.
Yeah, it seemed like it worked out perfectly, which one we read of the proclamation. Commissioner Lewis referenced, I believe it's your niece that's the cheerleader, was it your niece?
Yes, my granddaughter.
Granddaughter, I'm sorry. And of course, Jeff Ben, Commissioner Benton mentioned the story regarding Hayes and the relationship it has with this basketball team. I'm going to also share a story. Now, I believe I'm right on this, this is how it related to me, I've never Googled it, but I, as they know, and some of you may know, I'm a graduate of University of Oklahoma. Jocelyn Hello, who's the all-time home run leading NCAA champion in home runs, one-hundred-and-twenty-something, by far a big leader, she was a state champion in Hawaii, you're nodding, were you aware of that? Extremely qualified athlete, a great representative of the state of Hawaii, as obviously from the two speeches I heard, you are in representing your school. But more than just your school, you represent your team, your school, but you really represent all the Olentangie schools. And more than that, you also represent the county of Delaware County. And we take great pride in all of you being here today, you've all been exceptional. I live in the Olentangie school system and it makes me proud just to be able to do what I'm about to do. I'm going to read the proclamation and you guys should all be very proud of yourselves. Whereas, the Delaware County Commissioners have the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance and the exemplary achievements of residents. And whereas, the Olentangie Orange High School Girls Wrestling Team brought honor and distinction to the community with their exceptional performance and sportsmanship throughout the 2024-25 season, when, for the first time, the pioneers claimed both the state team championship and state duels title. And whereas, in claiming the program's third state duels tournament title, the team beat Deliria and Lebanon in the opening two rounds before defeating nationally-ranked Marysville. And whereas, the pioneers who began the season ranked second in the nation advanced to the Division One State Tournament, qualifying a tournament-best seven wrestlers. And whereas, all seven wrestlers finished in the top eight, the most in team history, propelling the defending state champions to a state title for the second year in a row at Value City Arena. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the Olentangie Orange Girls Wrestling Team for outstanding individual and team performance during state competition, signed by Commissioner Jeff Benton, Commissioner Barb Lewis, Commissioner Gary Merrill. Again, thank you very much.
We'll vote.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven one, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. And now we'll get a picture. Thank you. Boy, I tell you, that's heartwarming. Just heartwarming.
So proud of them.
Oh, gosh.
They're such good kids.
Yeah, yeah. The time that they put, the effort, the time.
Delaware County is becoming the championship central, you know, with the Liberty Boys Football Team. I mean, it's just a lot of neat state championships. Just great to see.
And great people, great, gosh.
Okay, item number eight, resolution number two five dash two seven two, in the matter of declaring personal property obsolete, unfit, or not needed for public use in the intent of selling such property via internet auction for disposal of property of no value.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. The list of vehicles are ready to be sold at internet auction. That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, it is. I was going to, wow. Any questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven two, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. And now we'll get a picture. Thank you.
There's a lot of tall trees in that.
Okay. Item number eight, resolution number two five dash two seven two, in the matter of declaring personal property obsolete, unfit, or not needed for public use in the intent of selling such property via internet auction for disposal of property of no value.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. The list of vehicles are ready to be sold at internet auction. That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, it is. I was going to, wow. Any questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven two, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash two seven three, in the matter of authorizing the use of procurement card for the facilities department.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Chris Lyons has accepted the position to fill our vacated painter position, so he's been here a couple of weeks and get him set up on a P cart so he can buy the supplies to continue painting throughout the county buildings.
Sure thing. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven three, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash two seven four, in the matter of approving addendum number eight to the lease agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Public Safety Bureau of Motor Vehicles for the Frank B. Willis Building Delaware License Agency.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Justin Navi, Director of Finance. This request would authorize a lease renewal for another two years with the state for the BMV office space in the Willis Building. And for each year, there is a 3.3% rate increase with the state for that space.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven four, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash two seven five, in the matter of approving addendum number nine to the lease agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Public Safety Bureau of Motor Vehicles for Frank B. Willis Building Delaware Drive Exam Station.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Thanks Commissioners. So for the second item, this is a secondary lease renewal also for two years and this is for the driver's exam space in the Willis Building and also includes 3.3% increases for each year.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven five, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two five dash two seven six, in the matter of approving the 2025-2026 program costs with the county risk-sharing authority.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, and I have with me Brian Smith, our local agent with SFM Insurance. And this is our 21st renewal with Corsa, which is hard to believe. The resolution indicates, you know, this will be the renewal for the 2025-2026 program year. The premium rate is 558,195. This is basically due to the net cost and the 30,000, approximately $30,000 in credits that the county receives for its participation in loss control efforts. So had we not done that, our premium would have been much higher. So I want to thank all of the departments, the elected officials, the supervisors, and our employees that participate in those efforts because it really helps to keep our losses down and ensures that our employees are out there operating safely every day. So with the renewal, this is reflective essentially of the exposure changes that we've had to date from our last year's renewal in 2024. It does reflect a 12.8% increase and as I mentioned, it has to do with the changes in our exposures when we're bringing buildings, new buildings in, new vehicles, you know, increasing payroll and things like that. You know, you really see how much the county has grown when you look back to 2020 to date. So even with that and the insurance market as it is today, it's, and Brian can speak more to that, but we're doing very well here in Delaware County and I'm very pleased with how everyone just ensures that, you know, we're operating in a safe and responsible manner to really help to keep these program costs down for our property and casualty insurance coverage. So I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Dawn. Brian Smith, Smith-Fike Human Insurance. Echoing what Dawn said, you guys do a great job here. The Corsa fortunately gives money back to the counties for their loss control efforts and it's not easy, takes a lot of time, but statistically it does show it works and it keeps the cost down for everybody. So hats off to Dawn and her team for coordinating all of that. The marketplace is still in what we consider a hardened market, so the program costs for Corsa increased 10% over last year, primarily in their reinsurance costs, so the insurance they buy to keep the pool protected. So to have a 12% increase for the county really is a net reflection of 2% just for what you guys have done is outstanding. So again, thank you. And Commissioner Merrill, thank you for serving on the board. I believe, you know, all us agents out there appreciate all the hard work you guys put in to continue to keep this a great and viable insurance product for the counties.
Yeah, I'll just make in addition, of all the boards I've served, I find Corsa the most, requires the most time and most education because the insurance is a very important and can be a very complicated issue as we go through some of the things you talked about. The, I just have a couple of comments kind of reinforcing what supposedly you said. And Dawn and I talked before this, so I said, sometimes we forget when we add a vehicle, it raises our insurance. When we add employees, it raises our insurance. When we talk about the cost, so that's a cost very similar that gets factored into the equation. So I'd just like to remind everybody that although it may be invisible, there is a reality, there is a cost. And the 12% that Brian alluded to, with the expansion we've had in the county, the addition of buildings, et cetera, being about 2% over the, our goal was 10%, we try to keep around 10% and we have to make some adjustments to make that happen. I'm not going to go into details. And also on the HR side, when our affiliates sometimes maybe make bad decisions and we have a $100,000 deductible policy, the first $100,000 is out of our pocket, so I would encourage everybody to use our HR department to make sure we make the right decisions at the right time to avoid those kinds of situations. And unfortunately, we did experience one of those last year. With that, I just appreciate all the employees are doing throughout the county to try to have hold the cost down and we live in a great county and I think we're doing it the right way. So that's all I have to add.
Mr. Benton?
Nothing really extra.
Okay, thank you. I mean, oh, Dawn, for all your work and your staff, it's been great and Brian, too. We're really pleased. And like Commissioner Merrill said, when you add buildings and we're growing, so I mean, just part of being a good county and first-rate county, we've got to, we've got to continue to grow in a very responsible way and we are, but we need the insurance, too, to cover that expansion. So thank you so much for all your efforts. We kind of put on an extra, gave you an extra show today with all the wonderful.
When he came in, I looked at his face, he was kind of shocked to the size of a ground.
There we go, out here and I'm in the front row.
You were in the front row, right, right, yes. Yeah, yeah, so, but thank you so much for your efforts and for coming in. Any other questions, comments? We'll vote.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven six, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash two seven seven, in the matter of approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for the North Star Water Reclamation Facility Upgrades Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Eric McPeak, Deputy Director with the Regional Sewer District. The first contract I have today is for a design scope increase with Hazen and Sawyer for design work at the North Star Treatment Plant. We're converting that to an NPDS permit to do direct discharge to the stream. And the next contract I'll talk about is a contribution agreement with North Star Residential Development LLC to contribute. So our portion of the $130,000 cost increase to this will be 26%.
Eric, when is this project, the upgrade, going to be finished?
Well, right now, if we can get started in September, it should be finished in the summer of '26. That's the plan.
Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven seven, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash two seven eight, in the matter of approving amendment number one to the contribution agreement with North Star Residential Development LLC for North Star Water Reclamation Facility Upgrades Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
So directly related to this previous contract, this is a contribution agreement from North Star to cover 74% of the cost of this design for the upgrade.
Okay, questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash two seven eight, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thanks, Eric.
That brings us to Administrator Reports.
Nothing for me today, thank you.
I have nothing either.
Okay, Commissioner Merrill?
I have nothing today. We had a long meeting.
Just a couple of things.
Commissioner Benton has a few.
Yeah, I'll go through them quickly. There was a big walnut chamber schools update scheduled for tomorrow morning, but it's been canceled. I was going to go to that, it was breakfast, their regular meeting. Records Commission, we had our meeting yesterday, our semi-annual meeting, and interestingly, more and more townships and villages and other agencies are approaching our Records Commission to get assistance in managing their records obligations and looking for storage space, so that's moving along and Chris Shaw continues to do an outstanding job there. Had a land bank meeting on Monday that went fine. The four new projects that we submitted for grant applications in the next round of brownfield demolition grants have not been processed yet, so we don't know if we've been successful in any or all of them at this point, but we should here soon. There is in the current state legislation, the current state budget, $20 million a year for the next two years for demolition grants because they backed away from it last year, so we'll see how that goes. Hopefully it'll stay in there and we can continue to get some grant funding for some demolition projects around the county. some demolition projects around the county. Lastly, tomorrow, Paul Revere is coming to the county.
Oh, that's right.
It's not actually Paul Revere. It's Brent Carson, and he's traveling around the county with making ten, fifteen-minute stops at, I think, like twenty, fifteen, twenty places around the county because, was it two-hundred-and-fifty years ago, two-hundred-and, whatever it is, was, is the anniversary, tomorrow is the anniversary of Paul Revere's ride.
Well, he was coming by another rider, too. You know his name?
Uh, no.
William Dawes.
Oh, really?
A little trivia.
Why Paul Revere get all the fame?
I think One Direction went the other way.
Okay. Anyway, Brent's doing that. He's going to stop at the courthouse tomorrow, I think, at two-ten or something like that. And hopefully, everyone can see that because it's just fun. Brent's the perfect guy to do that. Got our nine-one-one lunch today. And that's it.
Oh, okay.
Can I make one addition? Commissioner Benton talked about the record-keeping, et cetera. We talk about shared services a lot. This is one example where I think we were able to help the townships quite a bit because this is quite a challenge for them. And I applaud the efforts that are being made to help them wherever we can. So I just want to share that.
It's kind of like IT. You know, IT is now providing those services to more and more townships and getting more interest in it because it works. You know, they're able to do it cheaper and they do a really good job. And same with Records Commission. So it's good to see. I agree. Shared services is a positive. And it's all voluntary. We're not forcing anybody to do it. So, all got.
Okay. Well, Director Lauren Yan Cannon asked me to read her comments, recognizing Kayden Hannif. And Kayden is the Delcom's nine-one-one telecommunicator of the year award recipient. And nominations received for Kayden note his positive attitude, how quickly he took to the job after starting just last January, his commitment to the organization and all the hours that he works, how well he gets along with his peers, and his sense of humor. Kayden has demonstrated excellent teamwork in how he jumps in to help others. He consistently seeks feedback to improve and evolve as a telecommunicator. Responders have shared positive feedback about Kayden's professional and calm demeanor on the radio. Congratulations to Kayden for earning this award and for an excellent 2024. And he could not be here the other day or today because he does work a third shift and he does have to sleep sometime. So, so thank you. Thank you so much to Kayden. Yes. Thank you for all your hard work on nine-one-one. The beautiful lady is sitting in, you put together nine-one-one. We so appreciate it. We will be going over there at eleven-thirty? Yeah, okay. And so we will, we'll all go over to nine-one-one as part of our telecommunicator week.
Yeah, we, this is the day that we kind of celebrate nine-one-one and provide lunch for them. Not just the Commissioners, other people in the department as well. So I'm not going to go through the list of names, but there's a number of people that are involved in that. And it's just our way of saying, thank you for the quiet work they do behind the scenes. And when there's a problem, there's a handle.
Twenty-four-seven. Right, right. We so appreciate them. We do have need for executive.
We do have need for executive session. Resolution number two-five-dash-two-seven-nine. In the matter of journeying into executive session for consideration of appointment of a public employer, a public official, and for pending or imminent litigation.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion, two-five-dash-two-seven-nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?